Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reposed? None. Next, I will call upon the superintendent to do some introductions of the new assistant superintendent.
Great.
Thank you.
My honor and pleasure to introduce our new assistant superintendent, Dr. Jenna Mitchler. Jenna joined our team in 2011, then she took a year off to take a leadership role in another district. When we had a vacancy for an assistant superintendent, her name was immediately advanced, and after vetting her name, received unanimous support. So I'm real, I'm very pleased that she agreed to join our team again to help lead the district and serve our community. Please join me in congratulating and thanking Dr. Jenna Mitchler. Thank you. And I understand you have a few remarks to share?
I do.
Please.
Thank you for that, Les. And thank you all for this opportunity. It's wonderful to be back in Bloomington. I really enjoyed my time here, and it's exciting to be back. So I just wanted to share with you all that, you know, Les did a great introduction, but I did work here in the district for almost a decade. I was in Kennedy High School for a number of years. I was at Beacon Alternative Program for a while, and then I was even at Valley View Middle School for a little while. So I've had experience across multiple sites, and I know the great work that happens here with our leaders and our teachers, and I'm just, I'm thrilled to be back. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions, comments?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Other than that, welcome. And now, I would like to ask you, Dr. Mitchler, as your first official thing at a school board, to introduce Don Gremmons, the interim principal at Hillcrest Community School.
Thank you. I'm pleased to introduce to you Don Gremmons, who, as you said, is our interim principal at Hillcrest Community School. We had a tight timeline for hiring someone into that position. We had a vacancy late in the summer, and so we were thrilled to have some really great candidates come forward. And Don is the person who has taken the position. We have full faith he's going to be an excellent leader for us as the interim principal. Don comes to us with 16 years of experience in the district as an elementary teacher, as a coach, and then most recently as a dean at Kennedy High School. So with that, I'd like to introduce Don Gremmons.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here tonight, and I'm very humbled, I'm excited, and I am really looking forward to having this opportunity to be the interim principal at Hillcrest Community School. Like Jenna mentioned, I'm embarking on my 17th year here in Bloomington. I was at Washburn Elementary for 11 years, and I taught 5th grade, 4th grade, 3rd grade, and K through 5 science. And then from there, I went on to be a peer coach for the district, and I actually served as a peer coach for seven out of the 10 elementary schools. Southwood and Pond, early childhood, and then also I was a primary coach for BTC, the Bloomington Transition Center, 18 to 21. The only experience I really haven't had besides my internship for my principal administrative license is middle school. And, you know, so I'm, I feel very fortunate to then, last year, having the opportunity to be a dean of students at Kennedy High School. And I had an amazing experience. It filled a lot of gaps in my resume, but I also had the opportunity to work alongside an amazing administrative team at Kennedy, and with the leader of Carol Campa, who is amazingly compassionate, amazing human being. So I feel very fortunate to have that opportunity to learn from an amazing leader. And so, I'm embarking my first year as an administrator at Hillcrest, and for the, when I signed the contract on the 24th, I've hit the ground running, and I've been working full-time since, just trying to wrap my head around the systems that are in place, currently in place. I've met probably with 90% of the staff, either individually or as team, and I've also met with the executive board of the PTSA already, and, you know, and many of you have, I've met with Rod for an hour and walked through the building. I met with my custodial staff, and they gave me the lay of the land for an hour and a half, and we still, we still haven't gone through the whole building yet. And so, I'm just want to, just gathering information, learning what staff, where they're at, and then how I might lead them into the future. So I'm very excited for this opportunity, and thank you tonight for having me here.
Thank you. Anyone have a question?
I just have a question. Does Hillcrest have a soccer team?
Not yet, but they will. No. That's a great question. I feel as a leader, and I have done this in the past at Washburn Elementary, even at Valley View Elementary, I started a soccer program for students that might not have the opportunity to be in extracurricular activities. And Valley View Elementary was a great example. We had 65 kids sign up for the after-school soccer program, so I collaborated with an EL teacher there, and we created three different sessions and geared it towards developmentally and age-appropriate, so K through 2, 3, 4, and then 5th grade, in three different sessions there. So, that's definitely something I would like to start. Maybe not this year, but we don't know. I did say to the PTSA that I'm willing to do some sort of after-school soccer program as a raffle to raise money for the school, and I would spend the time and create some sort of opportunity for kids.
The reason I ask that is because he's had a history in the state of Minnesota and elsewhere of being a soccer star, and even with, when my children were playing, we had to run up against some of his teams. So it's just only appropriate that he's here now and working with our kids.
And I just finished my 27th year of coaching youth soccer at some level or another, and now I'm just gonna take a little hiatus from that and watch my own kids now that age is 11 and 16, watch them play, and then once, you know, get my feet on the ground and with the new position, and get to see my kids from the parent side of the field and watch them grow.
Yeah. Anyone else? Well, I don't know if we can say welcome to the district, but welcome to your new position. So, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, come forward. We'll move to Part A. And Part A is our board business: minutes, personnel action, field trips, grants, and contracts. Would someone like to move Part A?
So moved.
Second? Okay. And before we vote on it, I just want to point out that in our grants acceptance this evening, there's over $300,000 that has been granted to us, mostly from the Department of Education, but also from the Walzer Foundation. So I just want to acknowledge that that's a good chunk of grants being accepted by Bloomington Public Schools. So, all in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Brings us to Part B, and we will begin with the report from, on the Health Commons at Pond Center.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we move the agenda? Our guest hasn't shown up for that topic.
Oh, sure. We'll switch to number two, Food Service Partnership Agreement with Minneapolis Schools. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Please.
He resolved the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves food service partnership agreement with Minneapolis School District for the period of September 1, 2019, through August 31, 2020, in the amount of $13,000 per month. Agreement also has the option to enter into three additional one-year contracts.
Your second? Second. Thank you. And our Executive Director of Finance and Support Services, Rod Ziffkovich, is here to tell us about that.
Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, here tonight to talk about a partnership that we're looking to do with the school district of Minneapolis. Back in 2012, the federal government changed requirements for providing school lunches. Since that point in time, we've been making modifications to our lunch program, coming up with new menu items, all of it toward less processed food. Over time, we've met with consultants, we've met with other districts and the rest of trying to better our program. We felt that after the investigation of the last couple of years, look to do a partnership with another district that's one of the leaders in the area, and see if we can benefit from their expertise of what they've been doing for multiple years.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Sure.
If I may, I just, I appreciate the effort to continue to make things better. I know that this will be a little bit of a change for some of our district personnel, but I'm hoping that the outcome will be positive, and I don't have any reason to believe it won't. So I appreciate the effort that was put into this particular resolution.
And it should have, I mean, in job positions, at least the first couple of years, should not have any impact on current staff. This is more of, the first part of this contract is more of an investigation, and then after that investigation, we determine if we're going to move forward with a partnership for them to provide us with both food and also leadership in that area.
And then, just to be sure, there's three schools that are going to be under, for the viewing public. We have discussed this at a retreat workshop, so that we heard some of the details about it, but there will be three schools, and...
Correct. Indian Mounds, Valley View Middle, and Kennedy High School.
I actually like the fact that it's those three schools, because it covers elementary, middle, and high school to see how those programs work. And I also, when I was reading it, I saw a lot of work going into collaborating with making sure that everything is healthy. And they call it, is it True Health, True Food? Something like that. And so, there should be, you know, greater freshness in things, and I hope if you're a family that's watching this, you would be open to trying it. And it begins in January, I believe, and isn't that correct?
Right. If, if the initial stage of the agreement is for us to do a review, and if the review seems to be positive, then we'll move forward in January with actually implementing, having some of the products from Minneapolis being used in ours, and menus, the similar, very similar menus that they're using already.
Yes. So, thanks for all your work on that.
You're welcome.
So, looking at the structure of what's gonna happen in the fall and in the winter, so what's gonna start here in September? Is it gonna make a completely different menu, or they're kind of phased in? Kind of explain that.
In, for the first part of this year through December will be the exact menu that all the other schools within the district have. What is gonna be happening during that period of time, we're gonna be partnering with staff from Minneapolis to go through our sites, training some of our, if we're moving forward, be training some of our employees on some of the preparations that they need to do with some of the fresher foods.
Well, this is something, as you know, I've been pretty critical of improving our quality of our school lunches, so I'm glad we're making this step, and I appreciate how it's, we're taking baby steps, three schools at a time, and if it works, then we can, we can make it six schools or all schools, or if it doesn't work, we could still get out after a year and try something else. So I think it's something worth, worth trying.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair. Thank you. So, when you talk about review, I'm guessing that you're gonna try to get the input from families and students as well? I mean, how, do you know what plan is in place for knowing if it's gonna be successful from their point of view?
Right. From that point of view, I think what we'll, we'll do is once, the first part of the process will be is if it's beneficial for both Minneapolis and Bloomington to enter into the final stages of this agreement and actually implement. Once we implement it, then we'll start tracking some of the food that has changed, the menu change, and do a kind of, some comparisons of schools that don't have it, Minneapolis doing theirs versus other schools. We also have a third-party consultant being involved in the whole process too, to be able to evaluate what they see too. So, we'll get everybody's input, similar to how the board got input from middle school, and I think it was just middle school last year of the menus. As we all know, just like at our homes, not everybody likes everything that's on the menu. We found that out with the middle school students. Some of the new stuff, kids loved, some of the kids loved it, some of the kids didn't like it. So, we kind of have an understanding that it's, it's not gonna service everyone, but I think if this process works out, I think it'll be a lot, larger variety of fresher food that we'll be able to provide.
I hear no more questions. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Thanks, Rod.
Thank you.
Now, I will invite Jennifer McIntyre and Hannah Hatch to the table, and if your guests arrive, they'll jump right in.
Thank you, Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board. We do have two guests joining us, but they were at the Health Commons Clinic this afternoon or this evening, and I know that they were very busy today, and so they're finishing up and going to join us as soon as they get here. So, we will welcome them as soon as they're here. We are very thankful for this opportunity to present to the school board and to the viewing public, and we were asked by Chair Baralata to come and give an update on the Health Commons at Pond this evening. There's no action needed by the school board, but just more to give you an update and to talk through kind of what our next steps are in working with our partnership. It also gives Hannah and I an opportunity to highlight the partnership with the, with Mankato State, with Minnesota State, and we have had such a wonderful partnership with them for, over the course of the last two years and three years, really, in inception of doing the Health Commons. They've worked very closely with, with us, and as you will see our next steps, we are even going further with our partnership, and really building out and aligning with our PGP, with our high school students, and what we're able to provide for them as we move forward. So we'll talk that through as we talk about next steps after this coming school year. The faculty at Minnesota State University has been very gracious with their time and dedication to Bloomington community. They are not in session right now, however, our Health Commons has been open. It's been open for two weeks, and they have been actively being, seeing students, and so this is beyond their academic year. It's a time that they've come in, and they are very dedicated to our community here in Bloomington, that they've been coming up and working with us two days a week for the last two weeks. So, with me tonight, I have Hannah Hatch. She's our Supervisor of Health Services at Bloomington Public Schools, and joining us is going to be Pat Beowaltz from Minnesota State University, Mankato, one of our faculty, and Kim Fordham, our clinic and grad school admin. So they'll be joining us when they come, and I'll have them introduce themselves when they get here.
Oh, I think they're here.
Oh, they're here.
Awesome. Perfect timing. One second.
Should we all applaud?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We kinda got slammed in the clinic today.
So, this is Pat. Pat, do you want to introduce yourself really quickly, and I know you're settling in, so...
Sure. Yeah. I'm Pat Beowaltz, and I'm on faculty at Minnesota State Mankato, but I'm also a pediatric nurse practitioner. So I worked for 30 years as a pediatric nurse practitioner, and then slid over to teach both undergrad, but primarily in the graduate program, training family nurse practitioners, and I'm really excited to be part of the Health Commons at Pond.
Great. So, we will get started with just a quick overview of where we were. Most of you have been a part of the developments to this point in time, and will remember the history. We opened the Health Commons at Pond during the 2017-2018 school year. The year prior to that was in development and determining how we were going to create the Health Commons at Pond, and all the, all the pieces that went into that helped us with a very successful first year. Yes, last year, during the 2018-2019 school year, was also a very successful year, and we will show you some of our, our data around the number of visits, site visits to the Pond Health Commons. But our services definitely increased for our residents here in the Bloomington School District, and we saw an increase both of our high school-age students, but then all the way down to our early childhood students. So we will talk a little bit more about that. Going into this school year, our 2019-2020 school year, we have been aligning and doing further alignment and collaboration between our school district, School District 271, and Minnesota State University. And so there are specific departments that we have already started collaboration with and having common, common meetings with last spring. So we really see that this school year coming into fruition. We, I do have to run the clicker as well, right? So, we do have an agreement between our school district and the Minnesota State University of Mankato, and that actually runs through 2022, which I think actually all of us are very excited about, because we have really found a true partnership here, and we've really been able to expand that out. And being, knowing that we are going to have some time together, we have a strong advisory board, we have some really creative thinkers as to what else can we be doing to create this building of, or building a community of care across Bloomington, and how do we get involved with the community through Heritage Days and through many of the, the other community events that are coming our way in the next couple of months. I'm actually going to have Hannah talk about the next couple of slides.
All right. Good evening. This next slide here is, we wanted to start by just going over the services that are currently provided at the Health Commons at Pond. For the services, we started out providing what we, what we knew we could handle, and we really knew the students needed, and then it's been expanded in tiers as we've grown that partnership. So, this list on this current slide and the next slide is a current list of the services we're providing right now, and we hope to continue to expand those. So, currently, we see acute illness, illnesses including infections and other minor illnesses. They do provide immunizations for students. Immunizations are only available for students and families with state insurance or no insurance. Sports physicals are done there, nutrition counseling, education regarding resources, even resources within the school and community, bullying, prevention and action, mental health support and referrals, sexual health and risk reduction education, and then also providing chronic illness management, health education and health promotion, education regarding resources, school and community, health screenings and referrals, vision and hearing, dental and early intervention screenings, family advocacy, family support, guidance and education, family connections to school and community sessions, and family caregiving strategies. So a lot of education and a lot of walking care and follow-up care. So we have the acute illness and chronic illness, and really are seeing a lot of students for a variety of things.
We really wanted to show what services are being provided at the Health Commons, because sometimes I think we think about going, because I have an earache, or I'm not feeling very well, and so we go to the Health Commons at, at Pond. However, there are many other services that we have been providing to families, and we go to the next slide with the number of visits, and you can see that we've really started to get more and more folks to, to come and to visit us and to see all of the services that are being provided, so.
Yes. So this slide outlines the growth that we've had since the clinic opened. So, in 2000, the 2017-18 school year, they saw 111 students or families, and then this past year, the 2018-19 school year, the total number coming in in June was 345. So, we did see a 300% increase in students' visits within one year, which is really exciting for us, especially in health services, to see that resource being used and to collaborate with them. So what we did in seeing this resource is we really talked to students and families and the nurses within our district and kind of asked, how could we utilize this resource even more? What are they seeing it used for? What are the times that students are using it? Where are the students coming from? And from all that data, we worked with MSU and decided to open a second day during the week. So, this current school year, actually already, we've moved to Mondays and Wednesdays from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM to try and help meet, meet the needs of our students and families in the community.
I've seen that Kim has joined us. So, Kim, if you could just take a minute to introduce yourself and kind of let us know your background and involvement with our Health Commons at Pond.
My name is Kim Forton, and I'm the Administrative Assistant for the Graduate Nursing Program, and then I'm also the admin for the Pond Clinic and do kind of the admin kind of stuff for that. And I live in Bloomington, and all three of my children went to school here, and I'm excited to be part of this program.
Kim, it's my understanding it was all your talents today that kept things afloat at the clinic.
It was, it was...
A very busy day.
Quite crazy.
All right. So this next slide just breaks down this previous school year, and this is focusing more on where the students were seen. So as Jennifer mentioned before, these ladies have been very generous with their time and flexibility. So, you'll see in the first comment that 275 of the visits happened at the Health Commons at Pond, at that building, where students were walking in and being seen. However, 70 of those visits actually happened within our school buildings or at the jump start to school. So, they've been very generous to come into our schools and provide sports physicals for students during open house nights, which has been great, because it's allowed families who have not only barriers financially, but also barriers to maybe transportation or time, to allow their children to have sports physicals and participate in those sports and activities. So, that has been fabulous and very well-received within the schools.
We also wanted to highlight the hours and the undergraduate and graduate hours from our partners with MSU and what they've been able to contribute. And Pat, do you want to talk a little bit about the hours and the time that has been spent?
Okay. So, the faculty hours are hours that we, as faculty and nurse practitioners, have dedicated to the clinic. We brought in undergrad students specifically to share health information with a focus on injury prevention at Heritage Days, and we also asked them to walk in the parade and hand out information about the clinic with us. We also had graduate student, oh, student volunteers who participated during the summer and helped us with sports physicals, doing vital signs, vision screening. We also used our undergraduate students to help us during the year in the clinic as they were able to, as a replacement for their pediatric clinical rotation. If they missed a day due to illness or something, then they'd come spend the day at Pond with me. And then we involved graduate students who are learning to be family nurse practitioners to help us with specific sports physicals and other special events.
So, three key per field partnerships that Pat has worked really hard to, to bring along with her has been the National Associations of Free Clinics. That has helped us to increase our visibility, and it also allows us to continue free electronic medical records, which has been very helpful to keep and to sustain the work that we've been able to do, or that Pat and her team have been able to do. She also has forged forward with a partnership with Bloomington Public Health. Hannah and I have also had an opportunity to work very closely with Bloomington Public Health to really talk about how do we align our resources... closely with Bloomington Public Health to really talk about how do we align our resources so we're supporting the Bloomington community as a whole, between both public health services and what we're able to offer at the Health Commons. It also broadens that mission of one community and building that community of care. Pat also has worked really closely with our SHIP grant, and that's to screen each person for food security and then also referrals for hunger solutions. And so she's worked really closely with our families who have come in to ensure that we're really addressing the hunger issues that perhaps we have in our, in our community.
All right. So we wanted to share with you some of our goals for this upcoming school year. And we're very excited about them. Our first goal is around increasing the collaboration with MSU. We've already worked to do that some throughout this school year, but we'd like to even build on that more. So we've been having regular meetings with them as to how we can support each other in this partnership. The School of Nursing will provide job shadow opportunities in the healthcare field. So we're going to start out working with Kennedy High School and identifying students who are interested in careers within the healthcare field and partner them up to ask questions and have a mentor in that to find out more about different careers that they could pursue within the healthcare field. And then we also recently met with the MSU Social Work Department and those social work students to start on a partnership to hopefully provide social work hours within the Pond Clinic for our students and families, where they can come in and see a social worker, but also partner with our social work department within Bloomington Public Schools. Second is to increase the presence within Bloomington Public Schools. So we have been working really hard to advertise and get the word out regarding the Health Commons at Pond and what they provide and when they're available. We are going to designate specific immunization days this year at the clinic for families to go and get their required immunizations for school. And then we are also working to partner with the Early Learning Services to provide education for parents and families around parenting and around health concerns, as a lot of our, our Early Learning Services parents are new parents. And the students can go in there and provide some education for them. We also are going to work to provide some informational sessions with our after-school programs, specifically Galaxy, and try to incorporate some health education within those after-school programs for students. And then lastly, we really want to work to collaborate with the licensed nurses that are in each school building this year to really promote education and work on prevention and access to healthcare. So it really aligns nicely with the model that we're using this year with licensed nurses to really formulate a care coordination model and a health prevention model.
The two additional departments that we have started to forge relationships with are the speech-language clinicians from the Minnesota State University, as well as the School Psychology Department. So we started to forge relationships with them as well to do similar type alignment, but that will come later during this school year. And officially, the Health Commons is open. We are open for business. I know Pat and Kim can attest to that today. We have moved to two days a week, as Hannah had said earlier, from 2:00 o'clock to 6:00 p.m. And that will be throughout the school year. Do the two of you want to add any additional information as far as the Health Commons being open?
It's been busy. And we also will be doing jump start to school again. And then Hannah has set up for us to be at Olson Middle School on their back-to-school night.
Yep. For sports physicals?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we have also had parents, as they've come in with their kids this summer, sign a consent form so that if their kids get sick during the school year, the kids can walk over from Kennedy or come in with someone who's not their parent and still be seen. And parents have really welcomed that freedom to be able to send their kids in without physically being there with them. So I think our traffic will pick up a little bit related to that over the winter.
That was the big question I had because with our licensed nurses at the schools, doing what they do, and I suppose, are there any immunizations going on in the schools?
The only immunizations that actually take place within the schools are our flu shot clinics. And that's when Bloomington Public Health comes in. But our licensed nurses do not administer any immunizations during the school day that needs to be ordered by a medical provider for that.
Okay. But they can get them from 2:00 to 6:00 at the Commons. I noticed on that one slide, there's a young lad being, probably having a temperature taken or something like that. But, so when they come in, do they get the hospital treatment with a gown? Or is that just a staged picture?
It's a staged photo.
I was just going to say, there aren't too many of them that'll want to, uh-uh, I ain't putting that on. But the fact that 2:00 to 6:00, hopefully will work out. But as long, as you mentioned, it gets so busy. So how much, how many staff people are there? Not necessarily in hours, but just bodies.
Physically. So Kim is at the desk to register them, get them into our computer system. Right now, I have a volunteer who is there 2:00 to 6:00 with us every day. And she plans to continue that through the school year. She is a nursing student, but she has the freedom to do that. She lives in Maconia, commutes to Mankato. So it's awesome that we have that support because that, she will do the, like the vital signs of vision screening, and then I can dive in and do the physical exam. And then she and Kim will also look up the child's immunization records to see if we need to do any vaccines. Or, you know, often we have families who come in just specifically for vaccines and...
I know there's great collaboration we have now with the Bloomington Medical Center, whatever.
Public Health.
Yeah. And, and our nurses in the schools, you know, that if they need the immunizations, don't have insurance, you know, run right over there to that place.
Yeah. And actually, today, we did send a patient there because although we have our freezer, we don't have the Vericella immunization in yet. And that was, of course, what the child needed. So.
Well, first of all, when I was taking notes, I noticed that I have my Mankato, my Mankato pen. I have a senior this year, and I took him down to campus. I'm a former maverick. That was the last century when there were two different campuses. So I have a question for whoever wants to answer it. You had mentioned that you were increasing, you want to increase awareness, right? You want to get more people in there. Will there be a point in time when you're saying, you know, Mondays and Wednesdays, 2:00 to 6:00, that's just not going to cut it? We need a Friday or a Thursday, or maybe it's 11:00 to 6:00? Or, and is that part of a goal that's sort of somewhere down around the corner?
It's a possibility. I think it depends on, you know, we're looking at the sustainability of it right now. And I, we, it would just be administrative nightmare for us to cross over into billing for my services. So right now, the university is, is paying for part of my, a small part of my credit load is to provide services at Pond and to bring students on board there. So I guess it depends on, we're aggressively looking for funding, you know, to further support it. And if that came up, then I really would love to see us expand. We're also looking at perhaps using retired pediatricians who may want to staff a free clinic, you know? And I think that's a really good idea to plow into that. I just haven't found any yet. So if you know of any friends who are retired pediatricians, I'd welcome their...
They're going to call now because there's millions watching us tonight.
That would be the home.
Would there be a point then where maybe you would say, we've done too good of a job promoting this?
That's a real concern, especially on days like today, because there were, I was the only faculty there. And we saw 14 kids in four hours. And that's cranking them out pretty fast. So, you know, the rest of my evening, we'll be going home and finishing my documentation. But yeah, it is a real concern. And I felt bad for some of the families that I know had to wait today. But, you know, it was the last day for a lot of kids before volleyball and soccer, and they had to get it done. So, so I anticipated that today would be busy. But it's also the last week before we start back up at Mankato. So it was really hard to get any other faculty to commit. So, but yeah, I do worry about that. We looked at the hours that our patients were coming over the last two years. And that's why we went to the 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I was hesitant to do that because I would occasionally have walk-ins from the early childhood program. But that said, I, on most days, I show up there like at noon. And like today, kids started coming in just after 1:00. So we'll try to stay flexible on that.
Well, I appreciate all that you guys are doing. And I know it's, it's fun to get things started. And then sometimes it can be like today, where many, many things are happening. So.
But even with waits, I think families were so appreciative that, you know, like I, I had one mom who said, if I hadn't been here today, I couldn't have been seen till October at my family doctor's office to get a sports physical. It was like, so.
Cool. It's working.
Yes. Yeah.
You mentioned that you're advertising about immunizations. Where are the advertisements being placed? Are they in social media? Are they in the paper? I don't know that I've seen them.
Yeah, we've been working really close with Kate Martin. And we haven't really advertised just for immunizations, but more so for Pond Clinic and when they're available. What we will plan on doing is coordinating with Pond, one of those first days of school, to provide some extra support for immunizations because that is when our nurses are going through all the students' required immunizations and asking them to get them to return to school. So we're working to increase that availability and extra support around that. The immunizations at Pond are only for students who have no insurance or state insurance. So the other thing we'll be doing is, we always work to compile a list for families of where they can receive free or low-cost immunizations and walk-in clinics where they can have those done.
But, but where are they finding that out besides from the school nurse?
Yeah. So mainly, it's coming from the school nurse. We are advertising on social media. And we're creating new flyers for Pond explaining the immunization specifically and when and who could get them at Pond.
How about within our immigrant population groups? Is there information translated for them?
Yes. All the school nurses have immunization forms and resources that are translated for families that they will hand out to them if they need required immunizations.
Okay. And then at the jump start to school?
Yes.
Will you be actually doing services there or just finding out about?
Yeah. So we'll be providing sports physicals at the jump start to school for students. And then we'll be providing additional information on immunizations and where they can get those.
Great.
And we do have information cards about the clinic in English, Spanish, and Somali.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Thanks.
Yeah.
And also pick up some of the brochures from Bloomington Public Health in Spanish also, so that they're not, I mean, because that's a lot of information if it's, if you're having a hard time with it.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just following up on that same question. So would you think that you have been successful so far in reaching out to families, students, different nationalities and ethnic backgrounds so far?
Very successful. Yeah. And I think the word spreads in the communities. And I think that's why it's been so successful.
Okay. Another question that I have in reference to our school. So when a student comes and starts in elementary school and the middle school, practice in the past was that if the child was missing certain, certain one of the vaccines, that they have to go back home and not return until they get the vaccines. Is that, does that continue to be the practice right now?
Yes. So Minnesota State law states that they have to be either fully immunized or sign a conscientious exemption form and have that notarized. So we do our best to track and require that in order to be in school, you have both of those submitted. And we tried our best to provide resources and track all that as quickly as possible. So the nurses will all be starting workshop week prior to school and starting to work on that, making phone calls home and ensuring that families are aware so that when they come to school, all of the information is provided. We've also recently worked with the Technology Department. And the Technology Department and myself actually partnered with the Minnesota Immunization System. And we do a push from the Minnesota Immunization System into our Data Assist Tracking System of Infinite Campus. So if they get their immunizations at a clinic in Minnesota and they're entered into the Minnesota Immunization System, it will come to us automatically, which has really been nice for families.
Nice. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
When we first started this back, we were in a partnership with Fairview and then I think Normandale Community College for some dental and some doctor being on call. Now, I don't know if we've evolved away from that, but I happened to notice one of the vision, hearing, dental, early intervention screenings. Is there still that nice, comfortable dental chair still in the thing?
So Children's Dental Services uses the clinic area. They don't have a regular schedule, but they communicate with us because it, we can't, we, there have been days when we've both been there, but they try to go on days when we're not there. So, and we often refer families to them to be, to schedule to be.
Schedules will allow that to go on too. So it is still almost a full-service facility.
Yeah. I mean, we can do vision screening and refer them out for, you know, further an optometry evaluation, but.
Yeah. And I can speak to Normandale Community College. Our nursing department partners with them every year. And their nursing students come in, they shadow our licensed school nurses, and then they also assist us with the mass vision and hearing screenings for students.
And have we had any uptick in career in college academy with some of the nursing and/or whatever classes might be involved in that?
The number of students that are attending those classes, you know, it isn't something that we have looked at. And we most certainly, I think we need to look at that. We have had an uptick in the interest and hence our partnership with Kennedy to have students come and do some observation and job shadow with us at the Pond Center. We have seen that interest come through. And then interest in taking courses either through DCTC or Henning Pin Tech College. We've been really monitoring that and how could we provide those services right here with our clinic or with our Pond Commons and look at how do we incorporate that into what we're doing.
So the whole collaboration between the Bloomington Health College Academy, the school nurses, and this is going to be wonderful.
It is.
It is.
For our kids.
Yes.
Right. And for the whole community. Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
We're very actively involved too with the, there's a school-based health alliance, both nationally and in Minnesota. And although our clinic is rather unique, most of those clinics are adolescent-focused and ours is across the ages. We still have learned a lot from them and have been, I've become one of their board members just so I can learn more and pick up more. But I think just the, the health and education pieces and how we can work together to improve both are just huge opportunities for your students. So I'm hoping better health will have an impact. And kudos to the school nurses that you have because they're great case finders.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and working so hard today.
Thank you for having us.
Enjoy, enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our board member reports.
Madam Chair, I just have one bit of information. I seem to share this the same time every year. As we wind down through summer vacation, I would ask that everybody take a moment to see the buses when they're out practicing. I know that some of our routes are being run currently. Make sure that when your students are back into school, that you give yourself an extra five minutes in the morning. Take some time, slow down, make sure that you see all the students when they, when they're entering and exiting the buses, especially our little ones. They, some of them are new. They don't know which way to go when they get on and off the bus. There are staff there that are, that are ready to catch them as they sort of tumble off the bus. But it makes life... But it makes life a lot easier when everybody pays more attention. I would hope that there's an increased focus in the fall, but that that focus doesn't wane over the school year. So just want to make sure that everybody stays safe and that everyone has an enjoyable time bringing their students back to school. So that's my PSA for our August meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a chance to attend the summer school family fair last week, and I just wanted to highlight that they had great family turnout. They also had just the best activities. Whoever, their staff that was planning that, just did such a great, great job. I think summer school staff in general was great over there this summer, so. But some of the activities they had is kids could make their own little thing of ice cream. They had, they had this thing where you figure out the code, and then that got you a key. Then the key unlocked the box, and you got a prize, and, you know, kind of like, kind of reminded me of the escape room stuff, you know? They had to get the key and to get the... But then they had a way to do invisible ink messages. And then there was another activity where they did like the dry erase, and you put water on it, and it floats to the top. And so, you know, not only were they, you know, great activities, educational, but I thought, so many of these things are things that kids could do outside of here that are not overly expensive. So, oh, there was another one where they, they made a spinner out of like old CDs. And I thought, you know, just using materials that they had, not overly expensive, and yet they were great activities, kids were lined up to do them. You know, they rotated through all the stations, and I think they did it by grade level. So I was there when the older kids were there, and they were having a grand time. So anyway, I just want to say hats off to the staff that planned those activities and the summer school staff over there this summer, and really, all the parents that showed up, because they had great parent participation that day, too. So, thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead.
I was a volunteer along with Maureen at the Chip In For Schools, and it was really a good thing. It was, I think, if you haven't volunteered for that, it's a great opportunity to meet people who are dedicated to donate in order to make sure that the Education Alliance, what is it? The Education Foundation of Bloomington is able to provide scholarships and help for our students. Met some really interesting people, really had a good time. And Nellie will tell you more. I should have let her go first. Go ahead, Nellie.
Go ahead. Yeah, you can tell. Or should I?
You go ahead, and then I'll fill in.
Okay. Well, I have a few things to share, though. So maybe I'll go back to you?
Yeah. No, you go ahead, and then we'll come back.
So I, first of all, I attended the MSBA Summer Seminar. So the topic of the seminar was bold leadership. So we had a keynote speaker that was Jolly Corley, and she came and talked a little bit about how do we reconnect with why we are leaders? You know, what is, what is our purpose? So kind of encouraging board members in the room to remember why they wanted to become board members, you know, why they got elected, what is the purpose of their school district, what is their vision, and to really keep focused on that while we're making decisions. Then we, we had also a speaker that was Susan Brower from the State Demographer, and that takes me also to my AMSD meeting on Friday, because she was at both places giving her presentation. And her presentation was on the census, the incoming census. And I will share with you her presentation, but basically, she kind of gave us a broader idea of what is happening in Minnesota right now in terms of demographics and how Minnesota has been changing in the past 10 years, where she explained, she explained that what we've been seeing is more people coming towards the metro area. So there are increase of population in the metro area, which also means, you know, that there have been more students, but not necessarily a huge increase of students. And at the same time, they are seeing the grow in the elder population in Minnesota. So one of the things that she mentioned is that in about 30 years or 40 years, the concern is that they will see more, more older people and not as much younger people. And so part of that concern also has to do with the fact that immigration has stopped and continues to stop, international immigration as well as domestic migration. And so she, you know, she was pointing out the fact that the importance of continuing to have more people that decide to move into Minnesota, because then if we look into labor later on, we're not gonna have as many people who will have the right skills to be part of the, of the force. And so that would be a big concern for the state. What else? Let's see if you can remind me what else she... Oh, she talked about then, about the importance of educating people around the importance of census and the importance of having the right number when it comes to census, because we pretty much depend in terms of the aid that we get from the federal government, we depend of the number that we get. And if we don't have the right number, then of course, we're not gonna have the right amount of money that will be distributed between different states. And so because of different reasons that you are, I'd be aware of, there is big concern that not everybody will be counted. So one of the requests from, from the state is that in the school districts, that we help by providing education to all families about the importance of being counted, as well as how safe and easy it is gonna be. So this coming census is only gonna have 10 questions, so it should be easier to go through it, to fill it out. The recommendation, the suggestion, and also the request is that we offer tables at different locations in different schools where we can provide this information to our families. You can also do the census online now, so it's something to kind of be mindful of. Yeah, so there was a lot of emphasis on, please help us, you know? We need your help. We need the help of different organizations, and especially schools. So I'll share the information with you. AMSD also...
Nellie, could I just, a couple things on that?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, they actually have a curriculum to educate the students at various grade levels, to be able to take it home and let their parents know the importance of, you know, taking the census. And it is actually all online. And like Nellie said, it's only 10 questions. And so what they were wanting to have is even like an event at a school, like, okay, if you're afraid to know what to do about doing the census, then you can come to the school, and this night, we'll have tables and computers set up to be able to do that. Now, we, as a district, haven't decided anything, but that was a suggestion by them to make sure your people get counted. They also said that it comes in 12 languages, however, that does not fit the demographic of Minnesota, which has the Hmong and the Somali populations. So the state Census Committee is working on getting the census into those languages in order to make sure that those residents are counted, which I thought is really important for Bloomington, because we do have a large Somali population. But it was fascinating, you know, and they, I think, actually, they said that right now there are more people over 65 years of age than there are children. It's the first time in history that we've had that demographic. And so, yeah, Jim's real excited about that. But the unfortunate thing is, is that we don't have enough people coming into the workforce. And also, we have more people who are retiring early, and so they're leaving the workforce. And so the, you know, the need for more workers, as Nellie said, is going to be even greater with this. There won't be enough.
And not only the need of having workers, but workers with the skills.
Yes.
Because that was part of the concern, too, you know? In 30 years, we're gonna, our kids gonna be ready for those kind of jobs, because there are gonna be a lot of open positions. Thank you for making reference to the curriculum, you know? That was another request. If we can please help deliver that curriculum in the classrooms, they will have it all ready and prepared for us, so that we can implement it in the schools next year, you know, for a specific window of time. So that would be, that would be an important point to follow there. Then AMSD also recognized Dr. Melcher from the Minnesota Department of Education as the recipient of the Friend of Education Award for this year. So that was, was good to see. And that's what I have for my visits. I don't think I have anything else from AMSD. And I recently came back from my trip from South Africa, so very pleased with the fellowship that I was part of. As you know, you know, I was part of the NEA Foundation Global Learning Fellowship. And so as we ended the year of a study that we completed, our field study was that trip that was to be done in South Africa. So not only we got to hear more about the history of the country and the many political events, you know, that took place in apartheid, and, you know, how it affected the South African community, but also how that had a huge impact in the education of the country. And we visited different schools, you know, talked to different education officials, were able to be in the classrooms and observe the different classes and the system, et cetera. And what was, for me particularly, what was amazing to observe was how much love there was when it came to education in that country, how much, the commitment that the teachers, both teachers and students seemed to have for education, the lack of resources, and still, the engagement that took place in the classroom with nothing else but a notebook and a teacher. And so just that constant interaction, the respect between teacher and student, and the love that was, that made a huge difference and the biggest impact in their learning. And so even though the country still has a lot of work to do in, in terms of education, and they have a lot of challenges and struggles, you know, there is this big commitment on educating kids and from the kids to learn. So they do have similar challenges that we have in the U.S., but definitely, you know, for me, this notion of engagement being mostly based on relationship and respect and love, that was the biggest takeaway. So, thank you.
Okay. Let, hear from the superintendent?
Great. Thank you. I have two things. First, administration requests a motion from the board to establish a board retreat on August 27th at 6:00 PM for the purpose of strategic planning. The retreat will be held at the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce offices.
Second?
And that, where is that Bloomington Chamber office now?
At Civic Plaza.
Oh, Civic Plaza. Thank you.
Okay. Someone make the motion?
Second?
Okay. And a second?
All in favor of a retreat on August 27th, 6:00 PM at Civic Plaza. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Great. Thank you. The second topic is, the school year is about to start. It's gonna start on first week of September. So the viewing audience and parents, please visit your respective school's website to get the specific times and dates for events and when school starts. I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the board tonight? If not, this meeting's adjourned.